Six o'clock.
All right, meeting is open and I think we are being recorded a couple of times. Are we? Yes, the answer is yeah. All right, um, we all read the meeting minutes in advance, I'm just gonna.
Except the.
Yep.
All five of them?
All five of them, um, so is there a second?
A second.
My only question, Joanna, is the top one of these makes it look like it's a agenda. For some reason.
Yeah, we need to change the word.
It's, um.
Just go.
No. About shuffling around.
Will you just circle it?
Oh, it's right here.
It's not the signature page.
It's right here.
Okay, I'll change.
I don't know.
You did it already.
Yeah, sorry, but I didn't pass the law.
I'll change this, the top page.
I got very confused when I opened that, should I read it? It's okay, it doesn't take much.
You want to say?
I did sign that on Tuesday. There you go. Right, that's, you know, this is here. Over here. She can tell me that.
We go.
Just need that one.
Yeah, I keep showing that.
Yes, he did. I think she reads this one, so you know. Okay, um, I'm gonna make a motion to skip to, um, the Hazard Mitigation Plan. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Nope, all in favor? All right. All right, John, down.
I'm too over here. Um, where should I?
Uh, will it be possible, you have a seat right over here? Kind of the mic. There you go.
All right, thanks for having here, my name is Derek Strahan, I'm Senior Planner at the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. And, um, we were hired by the town of Blanford to update the Hazard Mitigation Plan, um, which is normally, um, a five-year plan. Uh, the most recent one, uh, was, uh, adopted in 2016. Um, so we're working on updating that so that the, the town is again eligible for, uh, applying for grant programs and things like that. Um, so I had a slideshow prepared, I printed it out, just, um, so that we can all have, um, hard copy of it. But I can also email a copy of this to anyone who is interested. Uh, my email address is on the back here, dstrahan@pvpc.org. Um, so I wanted to just kind of quickly go over this, um, what the process is. Um, what sort of public input, um, we are looking for in the process? And then where we're going from here. Um, so the, the second slide, what is Hazard Mitigation? FEMA defines it as any sustained action taken to reduce or eliminate long-term risks to people with property from natural hazards. Um, some examples of this can include limiting development in high-risk areas such as flood zones, uh, retrofitting structures to protect from floods, high winds, earthquakes, things like that. Drainage and flood control projects, um, fire safety education, um, those types of things. Um, the third slide, some of the benefits of hazard mitigation. Uh, as I mentioned, it makes communities eligible to apply for hazard mitigation funding. Um, helps prevent future losses and save money on disasters. The little infographic there from FEMA says that for every dollar spent on mitigation, uh, it saves $6 on future losses. Um, increases awareness of hazards and risks and ways that, uh, residents can better prepare, uh, for different natural hazards. It makes communities more resilient to natural hazards and impacts from climate change, and of course, it can save lives. Um, and I should note here that, um, for the purposes of this plan, um, it's for natural hazards, so this is primarily looking at, um, any type of natural hazard, so it would not include hazardous materials and things like that that are man-made rather than natural hazards. Um, and then the, the next slide shows the difference between mitigation versus preparedness, and they're related and there's some overlap. Uh, but hazard mitigation has more to do with, um, helping to prevent natural hazards from having an impact in the first place, while emergency preparedness is more of after the disaster has happened, um, then responding to that. So hazard mitigation would include things like planning and zoning, open space preservation, education and outreach, drainage improvements, uh, those types of actions that are done ahead of time, um, to reduce the, the possible risk of a natural disaster. Because they are going to happen, flooding is going to happen, um, thunderstorms are going to happen, snowstorms. Uh, so how do we make sure that the town is prepared, um, and is able to, um, lessen the impact of those in advance? Uh, so the components of a hazard mitigation plan, it's very formulaic, there's a, a specific set of guidelines from FEMA and MEMA, the Massachusetts Emergency Man- Management. Um, so things like hazard identification and risk, um, so the committee that I've been meeting with, um, on a regular basis has identified which hazards are relevant to Blanford and the relative risks of those, and we'll get to the, um, the chart of that in, in a minute. Um, and then looking at the town's vulnerabilities, so where are the critical facilities located, are they located in flood zones, are they isolated, and in the event of a road washing out, are they going to be cut off, those types of things? Looking at how, um, vulnerable populations might be at risk, which isn't as big of an issue for Blanford, but if there was, for example, insisted living center, things like that, uh, those would be the types of things that we would consider as well. Um, and then an assessment of the town's mitigation capability, so what is the town currently doing? What capacity does the town currently have? And then looking at what were the previous strategies from the 2016 plan? Um, what is the status of those, and then what, um, what are some new mitigation strategies? Um, the timeline, we've had, um, I believe, five committee meetings, uh, we'll probably have one more. Um, this is our first public meeting. Uh, by, I'm hoping January, February, we'll have the completed draft, um, for the committee to review, and then we will present that draft plan to the public in a second public meeting sometime in the spring. Um, it will then get submitted to MEMA and then to FEMA. Uh, I'll make any revisions if necessary, and then, um, get final approval from FEMA, which could take three to six months, and then the select board would adopt it. Um, and then the town would be eligible to apply for funding. The next page shows the, um, the committee's determinations for the different hazards. Um, location of occurrence refers to what parts of town would be impacted by it. Uh, some like dam failure and flooding are more localized, uh, but most of these are hazards that would affect the entire town. Um, the committee assessed the probability of a future event, um, the impact that an event would have on the town, and then the overall risk. Um, and these were all based on the judgment of the committee members and their knowledge of the town. Um, and so five would be the lowest risk, um, so earthquakes, the, the committee judged to be, um, a low risk, while, um, things like flooding, um, snow and ice storms were, were ranked as higher risk along with wildfire, uh, things like that. Um, the next slide, um, shows the process of what types of critical facilities do I identify in the plan? Um, fire, police stations, emergency operations centers, any, anything that's directly related to emergency response, along with, um, utility infrastructure, communication facilities. Um, there aren't any healthcare or custodial care facilities in town, but those would be included. Um, vulnerable population housing, historic structures, and then large places of employment, um, which again is not as relevant for Blanford, but we do know which, um, what are some of the major employers in town. Um, for this process, PVPC produced a map, it's a very small map on this slide, so it's hard to see. Uh, but I can send the full-size one to anyone who's interested. Um, but for part of the planning process, we map, um, all of the critical facilities, so that would include fire, police station, DPW, um, we map all the culverts in the town, uh, all the bridges, um, anything that could be impacted by a natural disaster. Um, to show where everything is and, um, and what critical facilities could be in, uh, potential hazard areas. Um, and I, I included a detail of the town center just to give a sense of, um, what sort of data is shown on the map. Uh, the next slide shows the 2016 mitigation strategies, I know they're, they're fairly hard to read on this size. Um, but one of the things that we did, um, as a committee, as we reviewed all of these, determine what is the status. Some of these were already completed, some of them, the committee judged to no longer be feasible, and, uh, they've been removed or consolidated. Uh, so what we're now in the process of doing is refining the, what are going to be the, the actions that are going to be carried over and what are new actions, so we're in, in that stage now of determining what actions we want to put forth, um, in the draft plan for, uh, for this upcoming plan. So that is where, um, I'm hoping to get a, a bit of input, uh, for a few minutes, um, if the, if the select board, um, is, is okay with it, uh, to get a sense of what are some areas of concern that the public has? Um, are there, um, specific natural hazards that you are concerned about as a town? Um, are there specific mitigation actions that you would like to see in the plan? Um, or just any other comments or questions, um, on the planning process?
Sure, um, so we can do, um, I was just trying to debate if we do the public comment now, but, um, okay, so if anyone has any specific, I guess, first off would be any concerns, um, about natural hazards or climate change impacts on Blanford? Wanted to, go ahead, George. Go ahead.
Part of the work at Blanford over the past few years has been improving the dirt roads. And a lot of the dirt roads are affected, or potentially affected by flooding of, because of beaver dams, and I see that, it's on your list here. Um, have you thought about how that can be handled with the, uh, with the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission owning most of the property that the beaver dams are on?
Yeah, we, we did discuss that in the committee meetings, and, uh, the consensus of the committee was to keep that on there, um, and I can perhaps put in some language, um, if, if the committee, um, would like, uh, saying in collaboration with, uh, Springfield Water and Sewer, because in the action chart, there is a, um, a column that says which parties are responsible for it. Um, so we could put in there, um, Springfield Water and Sewer as being, um, a collaborator on that.
Any other questions on that? Uh, yes, go ahead. Yes.
Okay, um, we got some new projects that may be coming in, and there's going to be more culverts being put in, have you taken that into consideration?
Um, so there, another one of the action items has been the, the ongoing replacement of culverts, um, the culvert assessment, um, which going forward is going to be an important tool in, um, for the highway department to determine which ones are the priority culverts. Uh, so that is, it's an older action item, but it's one that is going to be carried over and refined a little bit, because the, the old action item was to do an assessment of the culverts, and now that that's done, um, it, the, the revised action item will be to implement that.
Um, sorry, in the back, I saw your hand first.
Oh, it's just a quick, can you add Blanford's culvert map that you pulled up and did with all the high priorities to the Hazard Mitigation Plan?
Um, I can, the, the culverts are, are on the, um, the Critical Facilities map, uh, so it's the same data set. I, I think I got pulled from the same data source, so I think they're all on there.
Okay. Double check, cause if it was, we finished up in June, so you might have missed some.
Okay.
I just think that would be cool to have in the Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Okay, yeah.
George, one.
My other concern is that the vast majority of the seniors in Blanford do not live in to, to one place, they live independently, and they're often unseen or uncounted or unidentified. Uh, if there was a major disaster in town, what would be the plan, and has there been thought about how to reach out to these people, identify them beforehand, and then have a plan to reach out to them, depending on their level of healthcare, um, to be rescued, so to speak, from their situation?
Yeah, um, and there, there is, um, the existing reverse 911, um, as a way of contacting people, um, but I can bring that up to the committee, um, and get a sense of, is that something the town is currently doing, and, um, and if not, is that something that, um, because I, I'm also doing a similar project, uh, with Covington, and that, almost that exact concern came up, and that is going to be one of their action items. So I can bring that to the committee at our next meeting and, and, uh, get a sense of that's something that they are already doing or would like to see happen.
Yeah, uh, question, uh, we have a lot of, uh, roads that, you know, they're seasonal roads, you know, and, uh, like, we, we, we have them open in case we get forest fire or something like that, and, uh, how is i- is it possible to get funds to bring these roads so that we can get fire equipment down if we have them, or is, is that part of the mitigation?
Um, I believe that it could be covered under the mitigation funding if it's something that is related to, um, wildfire, if the roads are not accessible, um.
Yeah, they're, they're there, but we can't maintain, we have enough to maintain without mornings in the woods, I was just curious if that would be part of it.
Yeah, and I can bring that up to the committee as well, um, and see if that, if they, if there's a specific action item that we could put in there, um, related to, um, specifically for wildfire mitigation.
Yeah, because they're, they're narrow, we have small fire equipment, so we can't get large equipment down the road to fire.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you so much, oh, Nicole?
The Critical Facilities and Populations Assets to Protect, I noticed that the library is not listed on there, the current library as it stands would not be sufficient to stand as a shelter, however, the expansion, I know, looking at having completed did ideally the town's voting for support, um, in 2027, it'd be ready to move into. That library would have the ability to act as a shelter, and we are also valued to have the opportunity to have a, um, essentially a switch that would allow us to rent a generator and put a generator on there to allow it to be open to serve people in these circumstances. Um, but regardless of that, I noticed that schools are listed on here under Healthcare Facilities, Custodial Care Facilities, and schools, we do not have a school town, but we do have a library. Is there any way that this could be changed to reflect that?
Yeah, and then this is, it, that just gives examples, but I, I do believe the libraries on the chart, I will double-check that in, in, in the actual plan, um, and it, it is on the map, but it might just be covered up, oh, yeah. It, yes, it is on the map, yep, yeah, so it's on the map and it's on the table too. Uh, yes, yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much, and you, so we'll see you in next, at the next meeting, your next Hazard Mitigation.
Yes, yeah.
Perfect.
Um, yeah, thank you, and again, my contact information is on the back, the handout, um, so.
If you want to send that to, um, you can get that on the website, is it on there already?
No, not yet.
Okay, yeah, we'll get it on the website as well, so if you, you may get more feedback.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, so we are going to go back up to action items, and we were looking at reviewing and proving warrant number eight for, um, cable and wired payments, and then the payroll, which I have here.
Did you do all the motions for the, the meetings?
Yes, those are all signed.
How'd I miss that?
You bundled them right up for you.
What is the one that has the false information on the front page, please? I must have changed it already and didn't print it for you guys.
That was. Uh, 22nd.
Thank you.
Let's see this here, I'll give you this one real quick, while we get this time. And then I read, oh, there's, look at that one. What is supplemental?
No, supplemental, so they must have had to do a second one, so.
My assumption is that this one, yeah. This word, payroll, you know? Maybe someone put in late or something?
Who's it being wrote for, I'm sorry, that was texting me right now, that's what we said.
This is a safe. Well, there's the other payrolls, yeah.
Maybe the account number was high.
No. Joanna, what was the supplemental payroll warrant for?
That is, uh, something for Ray.
Oh, yes, that's what it is, we know what it is. Oh, that's, okay. That one. That one's you, we're gonna do that too. That's a bunch, you know? Oh, sorry, I just said that one, yep. I did, the song you need, this one lost that, sorry.
You thought that there were three things to sign in one, so we ran out of room.
Um, yeah, you, do you mean like where there wasn't a little sign it thing?
Uh, no, I meant when there wasn't a space.
Oh, back here, yes, so that's. Thank you. Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Hi?
Hi.
All right, so now we have the nomination, um, for EPS EC group.
Yeah.
Um, Jackie, do you want to go ahead?
You'll find three. You, do you guys want to come up real quick? Richard, Trey.
Richard, Trey.
Trey just wants to sit in the back.
That's okay.
So, Richard, can you say your last name for me, please?
Meswark.
Meswark. Um, and Trey Jelinek, yeah, and Corinne.
Chartren.
Um, all our three interested residents, and I am bringing them forth as wanting to appoint them to the committee. Committee has had meetings with them already.
Great.
And we're all in agreement that they should join.
Awesome.
So, okay, not sure what the board, the board just needs to officially.
Yeah, no, that's fantastic, I'm glad that you're, I'm just curious, how many applicants did you have, two, four?
Four.
Okay.
Oh, okay, well, that's exciting, right.
Um, okay, so I would, um, motion to, is it an appointment?
Yeah.
Yes.
Appoint, um, Trey Jelinek, did I say that, did I butcher that?
Uh, no, we did.
What's up?
Um, Chris Chartren and Richard Meswark, and to the, um, ES, hold on, it's on the other one.
Energy Projects.
Yes, PEC Committee, um, and is, there's not a term, it's just for as long as it is, okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
All right.
Hi.
Welcome to work, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for volunteering.
They appreciate it.
Don't expect.
I have your, uh.
Great, all right, awesome. Um, so, we're moving on to, oh, sorry.
Next meeting.
Um.
Sure, the next meeting will be in two weeks, Richard, I'll send you out.
He'll reach out and let you know.
Yep.
All right, um, so new business, we have, um, George and, I'm sorry.
Angela.
Angela, thank you, come on down for, um, the dirt road project? Um, yeah. Girl. Yeah.
Yes, let me through last name.
P A N A C C I O N D.
Thank you.
I request this time of the board because a lot has happened in the past year regarding the grant and the planning for the resilient dirt roads in Blanford. And a lot of things have come together simultaneously, in my opinion, that are really huge step forwards, uh, for the town. Um, and I'll outline them a little bit for you in terms of background and where we are today. Um, I think it was in February, I was asked to be the liaison with the Pioneer Valley Planning group and to work with them in terms of moving the local part of this program ahead. Uh, one of the things that we collectively decided to do is to get some input from the people who live on the dirt roads in Blanford, because they're the people who have to put up with the conditions, whether they're good, bad, or indifferent. We sent out a question, we asked the town clerk for names of addresses for those who live on the dirt roads, and we got eighty names and addresses. We sent out individual questionnaires with stamped addressed envelopes to send back the results of a questionnaire, which was designed for gain as much input as possible from the residents. Um, the interesting thing I found was that of the eighty we sent out, we received thirty initial responses by the deadline we set, and a couple more came floating in after the deadline. We clearly said on the questionnaire that the information would be shared, and this, and we asked the people to sign the questionnaire so that they were standing up for what they said in the questions and answers to the questions. Um, which I think put a lot of people in difficult positions, but required a great deal of honesty in their reporting. So we received thirty-seven point five percent of the re, uh, of the questionnaires we sent out, which is, uh, in my opinion and in others' opinion, a high, uh, percentage of returns. Um, we learned a couple of important factors, and there's a whole pack, which I assume you've read
Yep.
Um, by now, and the individuals, uh, responsible, a couple of things were interesting, that the average, uh, length of time that a person lived or family lived on a dirt road was twenty-four point five years, almost twenty-five years they lived in that location. Um, we also learned that, um, that the conditions, that there are conditions that, uh, almost all the respondents wanted to see change, and it was to see improvements made in the dirt roads. Uh, we, everything from potholes to delayed plowing to dust conditions, the mud, the washboard and washout conditions, uh, deliveries delayed to the homes. Uh, roads that were too flat in their opinion, blocked culverts and ditches, branches and leaves and ditches, lack of, uh, preventative services, they were all concerns that were listed in by various people who lived in dirt roads. Um, most of the respondents responded accordingly, that nine people or thirty percent said that the roads had improved in recent years. Thirty percent said they had deteriorated in the last few years, and forty percent said that they were about the same. So that's what we knew from the respondents. I think the comments, if you took the comments at to heart, people really are concerned about the condition of their roads and where they lived, and the fact that they have lived there a long time and are committed to their residence and being part of the community. Um, we also, on a follow-up to that, this had a June ninth deadline, which I think is significant. Uh, after that, we did a follow-up, uh, questionnaire that we sent out to various, um, shall we say, drivers who use the dirt roads, and these included the state police, where we had three officers responding. Uh, we sent it to several oil companies who deliver oil to homes in the dirt roads, we had two respondents from them, and we had, uh, the, uh, FedEx driver respond, and we also had the mail carrier respond. And again, the similarity of responses was almost, uh, universal in terms of the condition of the roads and the identification of the problems on the various roads that they, uh, encountered each day of the week. Um, from this, we took the information. From this, we took the information. Or you need that, okay? From that, we took the information and, and put it together in terms of what was taking place. And at the same time, the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, along with a couple of other agencies, was putting together, uh, an unpaved roads stormwater management tool, which turned out to be a beautiful binder, um, which has been disseminated, as far as I know, throughout western Massachusetts. Uh, it, I've, over the years, looked at a lot of instruction binders for various towns in both Vermont, uh, New Hampshire and Massachusetts. And by far, this is the most complete one in terms of down-to-earth planning and instruction and help for town highway departments. While all this was taking place, all this, uh, background work, we were very fortunate to hire a very competent highway superintendent in Ray. Um, he did not know what was going to come out of our surveys until after he had begun work on the roads in June and July. And as I happen to see him on the road quite a bit, I was well aware that he had considerable more knowledge than we've seen in the past in terms of the maintenance of the roads, the design of the roads, and the care of the roads. And we saw considerable improvement of the roads during June, July, and August this summer. Uh, most of the things that our citizens identified were addressed. And I was very, very pleased to say that and to see that, having lived on a dirt road for over fifty years and seeing a lot of mismanagement of the care of the road. Um, so now we're in a position where we have a highway superintendent who is competent to deal with the future care of the roads, who has an appreciation of what good road care is. And I think has built a team and is continuing to build a team that also appreciates the care and the work they're doing. Um, some of the things that I've observed is that they need equipment. Uh, clearly, the greater is far, far beyond, uh, its lifespan. Uh, there are other things that would make the care of their roads, uh, much better. Uh, from my perusal of this manual, it's clear that if we're going to save money in the care of our roads, we have to have the proper equipment to do it. And there's certainly financial restraints in terms of what we spend on it. But if we don't spend a reasonable amount of money on our dirt roads, we're going to be spending more money in, in their care. And as we heard earlier, if we have any disasters in town, flooding, uh, unusual rainstorms, et cetera, the roads will require much more, uh, repair than they would if they were in good shape when those emergencies happen. So in a nutshell, this is where we are at this point. Um, Angelina is, is, uh, here to talk about the Pioneer Valley, what they've been able to accomplish. Um, she's gonna talk about the Lanford Unpaved Road Field Assessment Report that we were involved in during the summer. And hopefully Ray will talk a little bit about where he is in terms of the dirt roads.
So twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, you had phase one where we, um, our transportation department did the assessments and you provided with that report. Um. The recommendations were basically add gravel to everything. Um. Based on feedback we got from that, from our pilot of that, we realized we needed to address this very differently. So we partnered with Franklin Region and Berkshire Region. And that's when we developed this unpaved roads stormwater management toolkit. Um. And we went from that adding gravel to developing twenty-seven site-specific best management practices. And we field tested the assessments um, in Lanford and in Ocean. So went from like an eight-page assessment down to a two-page. And how to get from, um, the tool that is the field assessment where you walk and you're like, you have run holes, potting, and you draw a little picture, um, to picking out BMPs in a very straight out, um, non-complicated, non-technical way, so anybody can do it. Not even, you know, DPWs. We were looking more to towards, um, lake associations, uh, in towns, often our private roads. DPWs don't touch and they're dirt and cause a lot of pollution into lakes and ponds. So we wanted to have a manual that could be, you know, that simple. That a citizen could, with some knowledge, you know, of construction with a bucket loader in appropriate gravel, construct some of these on pound roads as well. Um. The, so it was not townwide. We only did Blair Road, here in Blair Road, Hayden Road. Um. And Virgil Road was one of the top ones, but we didn't end up doing it because it only had one resident that parks at the end of the road and walks in. It was kind of going to the same road segment about eight different times and doing the assessments and reformulating them, so. Um, then we developed this and for instance, it didn't print well, but so for Blair Road, for this particular segment, those are turnouts. Um, and then we would have the thing, um. Oh, why, why am I spacing on what the little piles of rocks are called? Check dams. There we go. So for like this super steep segment of Blair Road, that's like close to like fifteen percent where the check dams are, adding cross culverts to get the water across, because that was causing lots of damage. And then formalizing the two existing turnouts. And then we reference what BMP, so you can go. Um, all right, so we're gonna put in a culvert, but we want to make sure we're protecting the inlet and it tells you how to protect the inlet. Uh, what materials you need, dump truck, uh, X, one with articulating bucket. It tells you how to grade it, two to six inch diameter stones. Um, if you're at higher than ten percent, use six to ten inch diameter stones.
So it's like the training video that you guys put together at PDPC level?
Yep.
Okay.
And so this just goes over the segments we did. And then some of them have nature-based solutions, um, that we developed. So GL grids where a section of unpaved road goes through wetlands. And it's always wet and always muddy. Um, and if you were to walk on it, you might know it floats. It feels kind of like bouncy. And it's also an area where you'll dump gravel every year and it just disappears. So, putting in those. Um, we did apply for round three, but we didn't get funded. And we're putting in a new expression of interest for round three again.
Okay.
Where Lanford would then become a demo site. And I believe.
Round three is what?
A demo site.
A demo site, like.
So. Taking.
To try?
Yes.
And, and what is that exactly? And why wouldn't you want to do it?
Um, it's money to fix. It would fix a section of unpaid roads.
Okay.
So it would upgrade it. Yeah. And we're.
Would be dominated?
Um, it's an MVP grant again.
Okay.
And I believe it was Blair Road, right? Because you're gonna.
No, it was Julius Hall that I was speaking.
No, that was the culvert.
Oh, you're talking about Blair. I went and looked at that hill. And it's at least twelve feet to the embankment of the power line where we're talking. There's no way that we're gonna end up digging all the way through when I walked over that hill and throw pipes going out and towards that pond. There's no way it can happen. We're, we're gonna end up having, we'd have to have that shored up. We'd be running so much pipe.
So.
It wouldn't be, that one wouldn't be feasible to do.
So our next step is you're looking at the applying again.
Yeah, and narrowing down the specific section with Ray that we want to address based on this and feasibility and making sure it's not one that's on listed potential paving, um, for the next couple of years.
Excellent.
Because it'd be, if you put in a GeoGrid, it's decent amount of money and a lot of work. It's really, really hard to get out once it's in.
Mm-hmm.
So.
And you don't grade a GeoGrid road. You just end up keep adding material. Yeah, you can smoothen the surface with a rake, but the GeoGrid basically is a checkerboard on the road that's about probably two inches in height that you, you can get them various heights. But you lay them down, it's a matting that basically holds the stones and the fines from washing away.
Okay.
So with this phase, you guys have done a lot of work. And, you know, yes, we did read all the feedback, so we know our residents really need the support. However, you also, we also agree that Ray's already done a number of these roads that you have noted, right? Have you guys been able to do a reassessment to say, okay, we did this, because that's gonna happen when your, when your project's going along, things are gonna get done at the same time?
I think it's interesting because of these three factors coming together at the same time. About three weeks ago, I drove all of these roads that were in question. And it's a remarkable improvement from the way they were in the spring last year and previous years that I've driven these roads. And I think the, 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 the big difference is the consistency going from what the residents have said to what Ray has been able to see, what we've seen in our assessment of the road during the time he's doing all this working because we walked some of the roads together and looked at them. And the three factors coming together, I think, has made a huge improvement in the situation for the community. I think if we did another survey next year, I think by and large, we would get a pretty close to unanimous response in terms of improvement of the roads. The thing that, that has come across to me is the team that we now have in the highway department and their growing capacity to grow in skills and use equipment. And our responsibility as citizens to support that growth in skills and provide them with the equipment they need. Because no matter how well-trained they are, if they don't have a grader that works, they're not gonna improve their road. And vice versa. And the better equipment, if they aren't trained to use it, same problem. So it has to be a unified approach from the town to bring along the highway department's skills and provide them with the appropriate equipment that they can do the job. That will save the town money.
Yes. Okay. I think we all hit that. No. Where, where, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Your goal.
No, where I was, where I'm a little confused or what I would like more understanding of, not necessarily in this meeting, maybe in another meeting, is to say, okay, here's what our assessment found. I know you have the feedback from our people. But, you know, PDPC, you're hired to do something to say, these are all the roads we looked at. This was the assessment of those roads. These roads are now done. What's left? Right? Because that's where the board comes in to say, do we need to sequester more money for this? Do, I get the whole equipment thing, but there's also, you know, we looked at fifty roads. Forty roads are done. Ten still need to get done. What, you know, how many people are residents on those roads? This is our recommendation for go forward. That way, we can go to our expert here and say, Ray, where are these on your list? That's what I would want to see. Okay? I'm not hearing that. I'm here. I get the whole training thing. But, you know, action is where we want to go.
One of the, one of the things that, uh, Ray and I talked about a couple of months back was, uh, the problem is, is like, you get heavy rain and it washes. Now, we talked about, uh, putting down calcium chloride.
Everything is.
You know, it keeps the dust down, it burns off the road and that. We need a tanker for that, don't we?
Yeah, a storage, a storage tank, and then we have a trailer that we'd end up utilizing.
Yeah.
You know, another thing, we keep talking about buying equipment in this town, and I know you're saying proactive about, you know, taking action on stuff, but I love the, I love the idea of getting a new grader. And yes, we do need a new grader. But if I, we get a new grader, every piece of our equipment is new. Now, when you buy a new car, you don't want to leave it outside in the elements and let it get faded by the sun. We're just, it's costing more to fix this equipment. The hoses are drying out. Yes, the grader is old. But we are, we're adding oil to it. We're making sure everything's greased and we're maintaining it to the best of our ability. Even though the parts aren't available for it anymore, we're maintaining a lot of this stuff. But we need some type of facility so we can actually basically save our investments that we have for the community of Lanford. So that I really would like to see something going forward with somewhere that we can actually protect our equipment before we start spending more money on equipment because those tanks, like how we're talking about the tanks, the storage tank to preserve the road with the, uh, with the uh, calcium, the magnesium, you gotta have it in an enclosed area. At least have a roof on it. Because the sun, it will just dry out tanks and break apart. Uh, same thing with the trailer. We let it sit outside. It's just gonna get faded out, dried out, and cracked up.
Like things that would be great for the capital.
Yeah.
Government plan or anything like that.
Well, uh, I think two or three superintendents before you, we, we talked about putting, uh, you know, what is, what do you call?
A lead to?
Yeah, like lead to sheds, you know, a whole series up by the, uh, salt sheds, you know, where we could park the stuff underneath the roof.
We already have the telephone poles. If we get some trusses, we could do that off the side. But thinking ahead a couple of years from now, like when Nicole buying those Conex boxes, get a, a, you know, a canopy, uh, and strap it to the top. I got storage on the inside and we got something at least that, you know, it's not heated or anything, but if something happens, the guys can pull a truck in and fix a chain or something like, you know. I've done it before, but if you gotta fix it on the side of the road or out in the highway garage parking lot, we do it, you know, but.
So is, is drone forty?
Yeah.
I, I think Ray's point is that we really gotta bite the bullet and build a highway department, building the house, the equipment. And because if we don't, we're just wasting money and letting it go down the drain. And the time they spend outside working in the winter time, and they don't even have a bathroom that works.
No, I know. How, how, that's.
Study can we do?
That's.
Let's stay on topic.
Let's not go off down.
We're running low on time.
One thing that, uh, phase three also is looking into is options for joint and shared, uh, purchasing.
Excellent.
So.
You mean for equipment?
Yeah. Not just only equipment, but like.
We're about, so two thirds of the way, and so about eight minutes left in, um, the dirt roads project. So Ray, was there more that you wanted to bring into that or just keep that in mind?
No, I, I have a, a list of the culverts that need attention. Nothing's like collapsing in the road, but, you know, we can plan accordingly, uh, with what I have for funding and what we can end up doing as a department. You know, it's a great tool to go off of. Uh, that's one thing I can say. I'm thankful for that. Definitely having the residents sending in the questionnaire and hearing their concerns and uh, it really, it was nice to see the ones that really do appreciate us and see they notice the highway department out there, you know, doing the work. Some, I think they're misled by their eyes to be writing what they're writing in this questionnaire.
Yep.
But, uh, you know, it's public information. If people want to read what people wrote, they more than, you know, they can. I'm not gonna read it out.
No.
But, uh, I did, I don't wanna.
To make sure that Angela gets her time here also is that you had this, you were in this project, and George. Um, is there anything that you feel that we need to know that you haven't already said?
Oh. About, may I pipe in on this?
You may, yes.
Phase three on how the federal funding isn't there. So we could apply for a project. We could end up getting the, basically the groundwork, the studies done, right? That's what we're talking about.
Are you talking about the culvert?
Yeah, like up on.
Okay.
It's like we're saying, or.
Culvert separate. So also part of this was a culvert.
Explain.
Um, townwide culvert assessment and prioritization plan. So with this new expression of interest for the climate one stop, they put the culvert replacement. Culvert municipal replacement assistance grant in. Um, I was gonna work with Ray to submit on that. It is no match. And it'll be for field design and prelimin-, uh, yeah, field survey and preliminary design for, to replace the culvert on Julius Hall Road. Because it meets a lot of the top priorities that the state is looking for. It's on a cold water fisheries resource. There's several residents. There's several residents on the road. So that would move that forward, cause yeah, um, as Derek was saying, you know, the hazard mitigation thing is wonderful, but. With the government currently not funding FEMA or big grants or anything like that, we have to find other ways to. Mitigate against disasters and do it before the disaster happens, cause those are sort of. The disaster happened and then we fixed, so we're trying to be proactive, and this one is in really bad shape. It's all separated inside. There's water coming out of the sides. It's just.
Okay.
Yeah, so we will work together and apply for that one.
Excellent, thank you. Um, are we good for, is there anything else that you guys?
No, that's, that's all I have to bring to the table.
And this concludes my role, which should have ended June thirtieth.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm not gonna take comments from the audience until the public comments section, okay, sorry. Sure, okay. Um, alright, so thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, you have next on the agenda, the three fifty-one MMA conference.
I don't know if you guys got this, but October thirty first is the last day.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if you've done this in the town. This is a, um, this is to recognize outstanding work that's happened. No, we don't have to do it.
This is not the, no.
January.
Okay, but this is for if you want to submit.
Oh.
To them, um, which is, you know, I'm saying it's kinda too late now. It's April thirty, October thirty first for submissions get awarded. Innovation things, but we shouldn't be thinking about this stuff, right? To get Lampers.
Yeah, absolutely.
I don't know why I got it.
Yep.
You guys didn't hear the needle on that?
I don't think so.
Well, I'm gonna keep it, if you wanna keep it just to read it. Um, but bottom line, it's if you're doing something innovative in your town. It gives the town some.
No.
Advertisement.
Right.
At a Boston level, which is what we want. We want the town to be.
Well, I don't know. A lot of times they've got on the map, we've got a lot of.
Okay, okay, so that's just that. Um, really quick, upset, upset? Yeah, P S C. Um, just really quick, we have met a couple of times, right? The committee has met a couple of times. We're now really focusing, um, on bylaws. Bylaw and any conditions that we wanna put on it in a, in a pilot in the future, whatever. Um, so that's kinda where we're at.
And this is like involved with the possible moratorium type of bylaws or separate?
Totally separate. So the moratorium allows time, right? And in that time, when the lawyer was here, Mark was here last time, he said, focus on your bylaws. Make sure you have strong bylaws. For example, in our bylaws today, it says ninety percent of our crap, right? We wanna look at that, so we're, I'm kinda like breaking that down with the team and we're gonna come back. Up to you guys with bylaws to us.
Okay.
Possible bylaws, just to move it forward. Um, any questions on that?
No.
Just so you know where it's at. Next is the letter to Springfield Water. I put together a letter. Uh, it changed a little bit since the team has seen it, but it's basically the same. Um, you should have a copy of it.
Yes.
The letter, um, the team had talked about this, uh, you know, yes, we have, um. You know, certainly through our connection with Springfield Water, they've been notified, but there's not been any kind of formal notification from us as a board. For them to take responsibility, accountability of coming in here and doing analysis themselves.
Yeah.
So thought is, you know, send them this, send it to the surrounding towns that actually use Cabo Mountain. Um, to ensure that we've officially communicated and no question, they should come in here and have a dialogue about it.
Yep.
That's pretty much it. Now, I signed it for me on behalf of the board.
That's great.
If that's okay. We'll have them send me whatever they want and then I'll get with, you know, we'll, we'll get with them.
Yeah.
Okay?
So you're gonna find that.
We're gonna execute, yeah.
That's the same thing, only this will be official from the town.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Um, it was interesting, cause I did join what you joined one of the meetings, right?
Yes.
Um, and when they wanted you to speak, they wanted to talk to the people that were elected first, before they would talk to. Citizen, residents, which I found kind of interesting since I'm not in this world normally.
Yeah.
And it just conveyed to me the necessity for if towns are gonna get involved, their select boards need to get involved.
Yep.
Um, so that's that. The, we talked briefly, you know, on the two hundred thousand dollars. There, um, there's gonna be times when we do need to talk to legal through Christina. Tough to do to come in and say, well, I'm gonna talk to them and then wait five days to come in here and ask for approval to take them money. So we just talked and we're gonna go ahead and if we have questions, she'll get them answered. But I really would like to see legal bill us kind of under a different code, so we could keep all the solar related stuff and everything in one.
That makes sense, yes. Yep.
Okay. Um, understand who's responsible for negotiating with vendors during the pilot. Uh, we don't need to answer that one right now, but.
We've hired, um, someone in the past, he was fantastic, um, yeah, that worked with us for the. Sun, the solar, and, um, I'm sure that we can find that information.
Oh, great.
Yeah, he did a great job.
Okay, let's do that.
I don't like that, include taxes, though. Find out on the bottom one now.
No, no, we don't.
No, we don't? Springfield Water did a good job on it.
Well, you said always with this last solar negotiations, we have, we've taken like two hundred thousand dollars a year.
Two forty-five.
Yes.
It's two hundred from all the solars right now, but Springfield Water pays about two fifty.
Yeah.
That's why it's starting to hire someone to help us put these together instead of however we did it back in the, the day with Cabo Mountain, obviously.
Well, I, I, I understand that, but when you hire somebody, you pay them, so.
It was about minimal fee.
It's a minimal.
Yeah, it was not a lot at all. No, and it was, it was definitely worth it for us, cause we ended up doing much better than I think we.
Yeah, so once, once the negotiation is done, does it come before the, before the town? Okay.
Oh, well, before us, yes, absolutely, it comes before.
Yeah.
The other thing that we're gonna do with the committee is we're investigating, what are all the pilots out there today? And even in other towns, what are the deals that are being struck? So we get a better feeling for, you know, what are we doing? If that, if it gets to that, if it gets to that point, we need to be prepared.
Okay.
Okay? Uh, but we won't, nothing can be said without you.
Yeah.
Um, the, understand the outcome of the questions around sixty-one A tax status, so it relates to commercial solar. I did talk to Christina a little bit about that. I'm still on the fence, but legal's saying they could do it. Which is, this is the, uh, situation where.
Smart program, it's different. Sixty-one A, it's not sixty-one B, so.
Okay, sorry.
Right.
I think there needs to be some more discussion and dialogue though with the groups who you understand it. Um, and I understand it legally, and I understand legal reasons for going one way or the other. Um, just the data, I'm, I'm still getting, it, from my, from my perspective, I'm getting a little bit still conflicted. Thoughts on it, which sixty-one A is if I'm in agricultural.
Correct.
Right? And under normal conditions, if you sell it or lease it and do something different on it. You have to pay the back taxes on it for five years, back, five years back taxes, and the town has the ability to purchase.
Now, also.
But a smart program adds a whole nother element of.
In order for it to remain agricultural, a certain amount of that. Solar has to go to farm.
Correct. Well, not under the smart program.
Not under the smart program. That's why this has come up and it's.
Who came up with the smart program?
State. Yes, sir. Got it. So yes, under, uh, it's called dual use for solar, and you are right, in some conditions, it does, it has to. Um, power the farm, right?
Yeah.
And you can't make more than a hundred and twenty-five percent of your total usage, all this stuff, a hundred percent correct.
Except for.
Except for, uh, if you are enrolled in this smart program, uh, which is again, a state thing, right? So if they qualify to be in the smart program, they. So do not have to come out of sixty-one A, they can stay, it's dual use, it's not a change of use. And the power does not need to power the farm, and it has nothing to, or the land, whatever's there. Uh, and you do not have to, there's no cap on how much energy you can generate. So that's why there was a lot of back and forth with this. You're absolutely correct too, Jackie, because the way that it reads, uh, is, is.
Still confused.
It's confusing. If you were to just read it, you would say, oh, they can't do this because it's not, you know, it's not powering the farm. And it's certainly going to create more than a hundred and twenty-five percent of the energy used, which was what I had thought too. However, I spoke to people, um, from state D O R and D L S, lots of acronyms. Um, I spoke with our attorneys and they both said the same thing, that as long as we have paperwork. With their application from the state that says they qualify, like a predetermination qualifier for this smart program. Then they can proceed and stay in chapter sixty-one A, and it's not a change of use.
Okay, now, now leads to another question. Does this, uh, sixty-one A? With the, uh, smart deal, whatever you wanna call it, uh, that has to be put in when they reply, when they apply for the permit? Or can they apply for the permit and then go apply for the smart?
So that's again, a little two-part and it's confusing, but I will explain it, so. So when they, currently, there, there is one that is in front of, um, the planning board right now, okay? So they are considering it, and, and so with their package, we are asking them to give us this predetermination letter. From the smart program saying that they qualify, right? So you, that's like a pre-qualification thing, yes, it's before the permit is issued. We are asking for them to give that to us to show that they have done their work with the smart program and that they will likely qualify. My understanding is the smart program operates a lot sort of like sixty-one A in the fact that every year you have to come and, you know. Fill out your paperwork for sixty-one A to make sure that you still qualify and, and all of that. They will have to do that now with the state for the smart program. So although they are not in, they, they have not gotten the final determination from the smart program to, to know that they're in it, right? It's just the pre-qualifier right now. They will have to produce a document, uh, showing that they one hundred percent are in the smart program. In order for this all to be.
And that's coming.
Yearly, just like sixty-one A.
That's weird. One year you'll, you're, you're in, one year you're out.
Well, so there's, there's caveats to being in the smart program, like you have to, you still have to produce like. X amount of money from the farm, so like, if you're selling the hay, or if you're selling whatever you're making, you have to show that you've. You've taken in X amount of dollars, I don't know the dollar amount off the top, it's small, it's a nominal amount.
All right.
Um, just to show that, that you're still.
That you're producing something.
Correct. Correct.
Okay, all right. That makes it a little more understandable.
Right, but you know, I mean, it, it really, it gets complicated with all these nuances that we're finding out as we go along. But it's important to have these discussions amongst us, so there is no question, we understand what's going on, yeah, right? Um, so anyway, that's kinda where that's at. It does put them into a position of having to take another step. Basically, okay? Um, so just a couple of things for the next special town meeting. Um, the water department had a meeting with the water department the other day. It is very possible they're gonna come to the board. Uh, we're needing funds, out of their own funds, by the way.
Okay.
I've gone through that with, with the, they may have a borrow, I'm not sure yet, but just be aware, that's gonna happen.
So that needs to go on a special town meeting.
I sent him a note today and said, you gotta get this done, because we have a special town meeting before you know it.
Yeah. Oh, they want something on the warrant, cause I, we're gonna have to do that recently, like, it's gotta be posted by November third. So. Okay. Okay. Uh. What is this? Passable approval for money for the water department under review by the water.
That was.
Okay. The last, uh, two, and we bar Nicole.
Oh, Nicole. You know.
May I get next to you, Mary?
Imagine if she said no.
Lots of hope we do find. Would be what happened. Power. Um, so I'm here today because the library is reaching the. End of the beginning of our planning and design phase, um, or the beginning of the end, I suppose. Um, and we do not necessarily, we don't need a vote from the select board. Because you voted to be able to let us do this when the town voted, um, in March of twenty-four. But I just want to keep everybody in the loop of what is happening. Um, so all of the community design, uh, programs have been done. All the information has been compiled, and tomorrow I will be submitting to the MBLC. Our packet of plans and designs for the upcoming library expansion. Um, these have all been present at our, um, library, they've been in the town hall. Um, I've been practically wearing them outside as a sandwich board. Uh, we've been trying to make sure that everybody in the community has had the opportunity to interact with us and the architects and the OPNs. To make sure that these plans would collect every, um, person's needs for the community. Um, so we will be submitting that information, and there is one thing that is kind of like our little snag that came up. Um, and that is parking. And as you know, the current library has a, um, a relatively appropriate lot for the size of the building. But with the new building, they're anticipating obviously an increase in traffic, and they have a minimum stipulation of, um, one site. Uh, one parking lot spot that is not. A set aside accessible spot, so in limiting that accessible spot from the count per a certain number of square feet. And the way that our, um, building is coming out, it looks like we will need fourteen parking lot spots. We currently have ten with an additional one for, uh, eighty accessibility. So we have ten spots that can count for these fourteen planned on our site. In order to make the MBLC's, um, requirement fit, we need to identify four additional parking lot spots. That could be used for library patrons. This does not have to necessarily be on the physical property of our library. Um, it can be street parking, it could be parking in an off-site area that is walkable. Um, and the most. Logical and excessively sensible route in my mind would be that people oftentimes park on Glasgow. When we have events, um, because, you know, that's just. It's the one that the library parking lot is off of currently.
Oh.
Yeah, so that, that is a dead-end street, um, and that seems to me to be the most logical place to have this overflow parking, if you will. So it would be four additional spaces that would be allowed for parking on Glasgow.
Okay.
We don't need to put signs on them, we don't need to do anything. All we need to do is say. Four cars can park on Glasgow, and that is considered part of the library parking. Um, and in the future, we will not take, the reason that they make you do this is because. In previous library projects, there'll be things like a rail trail, that will then happen after the library is built, they'll put a rail trail by. And then all of a sudden, it's like, oh no, we're gonna label this as rail trail parking only. And it's like, no, this is the library's parking, so they just want to make sure that this is, um, acceptable by the town powers that be. So they request that I submit a letter from either the select board or the planning board. The previous letter that I looked at that they showed me, um, was a mayor had signed it. Um, so it doesn't have to be from anybody like super specific, it just has to be from somebody that represents the town.
Okay.
Um, so I have drafted the letter, and in this letter, I also put that there are parking spots also available at town hall. Located five hundred feet from the library. It is five hundred and eighty-six feet. And, um, the post office lot, which is two hundred and fifty-six feet away as well, and that those parking lot spots are not claimed by the library. But that just completes the picture of what parking is available in the community.
Yeah.
Because they just need to see that there's parking available. Yes.
Glasgow.
Yes.
Let's go back to that for a second.
Yes.
This is it, is this in front of anybody's house or anything like that?
Well, there are houses on Glasgow, but it would not be like in front of Tracy's driveway or something. I did print out on Glasgow a section of street that is a hundred and twelve feet, it's a hundred and twelve point seventy-three.
Here's where I'm going with this.
Yes.
You know, I mean, it would be, here's my two cents on it, is that it would be better to be able to. You know, I mean, it would be, here's my two cents on it, is that it would be better to be able to specifically tell them they could park in the town hall. Reason why I say that, somebody sells their property, we've got traffic sitting on the front of their house and they don't like it. Then all of a sudden, we don't own their property, do we? But still.
It would be parking on the road.
Yeah, as long as you're not encroaching on anybody's end um curb cut, right, and, and they can get in and out of their driveway, there's not much they can do.
I know it's not much they can do, I just don't wanna, I wanna later on hear about it from, you know, from a resident. That we got people, you know, cuz you're saying the traffic's gonna increase, so you have to assume they're gonna use that. So is there, is, does it mean that we can't just say your secondary place to the M B L C is the town hall? Or do you have to put Glasgow?
I'm not certain what the parameters are for them allowing it to count as library parking. Yeah, like I don't know if they would require there being four signs on spots saying like this is library parking. Um, so I'm not certain of the parameters.
I mean, people have parked on the road forever.
I, I think though, and in your application, I think one of the questions that would be raised if it was raised. Would be if uh police and fire apparatus could. Able to test while the cars park there.
So, um, I guess that that's what I'm wondering is how do, how, how would you like me to specify that? And like this section that I've like put out here, it's actually Mary's garden is what borders that, love you, Mary. Um, so I, and that would actually be, the average parking spot measures at most twenty-five feet long. So this would be leaving um twelve feet on either, you know, on one end or the other, six feet on both ends.
I guess it would be like, um, just asking Ray the width that is needed for emergency vehicles to get by and making sure that that. Yeah, yeah. So I, whatever the, the numbers are, the only other comment I was gonna make was that post office parking, I think is technically the bicentennial park. It doesn't belong to the.
Okay, so it belongs to bicentennial park, so therefore.
It's town.
It's town parking. That is a very important station, thank you so much, because I definitely wanna make sure that that reflects that, okay, um, in which case. Yes.
Sorry. So you're saying that if we ever wanted to sell the building there.
That's a whole discussion for another day, but yes, that's. Yes, that's the problem we keep running into. No, it's the post office has no parking attached, but yes, and I thought it's something I do wanna talk about.
So, um, I obviously need to make an edit on this so that I do not put post office lot, I can put the bicentennial park lot. Um, with that, and with that alteration, I also wanted to put how many parking spots were available at the town hall? Just for a complete thing, and I wasn't sure if anybody knew that number. At the town hall parking lot, do we know how many parking lots?
Yeah, we did the lines over there, so.
Okay, um, and then Ray, as the highway department, it would be important to have, I think that you're, you'll be a very valid person to have sign us as well.
Has to do Glasgow and then, and then. Do in the addition of the other ones.
So I could have Ray sign us and then could I tomorrow find somebody at the select board who would be willing to sign this or Christina? Christina, you'll be our. Okay, thank you so much, I really appreciate um your, your work. And I just wanted to give a really quick, very brief, sorry about every used waiting, a very brief timeline of what's the upcoming um situation for the library. In lieu of the uh vote to have on the agenda, so we um, we sub- we're going to be submitting our packet of information tomorrow. And from that point, the M B L C, who's the branching authority, has two weeks to review that information. And give us feedback on any of the building program plans that we have that they find need alterations. Um, at that point, those plans will be accepted and like that's what it is. Um, and then we are responsible for having an estimate done through the estimating service with the um. With the architect, the G R A. That estimate will come back to us, but it will not have necessarily all of the um soft costs itemized in a way that is um. Super accurate, right, because they're not responsible for that, that's our owner's project manager, they have experience with that. So that person then comes and we figure out like furniture and everything like that, we've already started that process, so we're ready to hit the ground running when that estimate comes back. The estimate will come back to us and then we send that estimate to Andrea at the um M B L C, she is our grant coordinator there. I should mention that when, when our O P M is talking to us about this cost estimate and making sure that everything contingencies and all these other things are all. Perfectly lined up, Dave Hobson will also be part of that conversation to make sure that he is, um, you know, aware of what's happening as the chair of the building committee. So he'll be able to navigate that conversation with us and he knows obviously the situation of the town and he's been part of this process since the beginning. Um, at that point, that number will go to Andrea at the M B L C. She puts through this big cost estimator machine thingy that they have, it's really just stretchy. Um, and that will give her the amount of that cost. That is eligible construction costs, right? So one hundred percent of the construction costs that are eligible for the M B L C to pay, she'll get that number. We do not yet know what this number is, we do not know what any of the numbers are. Um, at that point, she will say, Lambert has a seventy-five percent. Grant for the eligible construction costs, this is what that seventy-five percent of those one hundred eligible construction costs comes out to being. The town will be responsible for the twenty-five percent of eligible construction costs not covered by the grant. And then the F F N E, which is the furnitures, fixtures, things like that, um, the finishes. So those costs and the um twenty-five percent of the eligible building costs, right? Pardon me?
And the interest.
Um, that's not at this point, I do not believe she is calculating in the interest, in which interest do you mean, I'm sorry.
On the money that they're putting in from a grant standpoint, there's interest that you, we have to pay, cuz they're not paying the whole grant right away, right?
Um, hold on Jackie, yes, you are not wrong, but that's not what this number comes out to being, so like that's.
Just what is it gonna?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, like that's a very different thing, and we also earn interest on the grant funds that they give us. So the eighty thousand dollars that they give us is an interest-bearing account, so we've already earned, I wanna say like. Two to three thousand dollars on interest on that money, in addition to what they've given us, so like there's interest in both ways. Um, interest earned and then interest accrued that week, right? Okay, so anyways, now we have this number that is the number that the grant covers and the number that the town covers. And the M B L C then passes that number on to their executive board, that happens on November twenty-fifth. November twenty-fifth, they get that number, it's now like in their request pile. December fourth, the M B L C executive board of commissioners meets to vote to give the town that amount of money. They love doing it, it's not a question of whether or not it'll happen, um, and that money is already set aside for us, like the biggest possible number they could found. Because they have this huge pot of money and our portion is in that pot. Um, they vote to make that number official on December fourth. We are then able to vote immediately after, if we want to have a vote, December fifth at seven A M, we could, but we won't. So we can have that vote on December ninth. Because we know the number that will be voted on, on Mar- on November twenty-fifth. We can have a town information session on December second, as we've always done before, to make sure that people understand exactly what the costs are. Why these are the costs, what will be covered, what the burden on the town will be in terms of the financial impact, the interest. All of those squiggly little numbers can be promoted to the town in a way that makes them easily understandable. And we'll have all of our building representatives available at that meeting to make sure that we can answer everybody's questions a full week before. Let people go home, think about it, marinate on it, and then come back the next week to vote.
So you're saying there's, we need to schedule a special town meeting?
Yes, that is what all this is leading up to, I'm very sorry about my long-winded route. I just wanted you to understand the full picture and all the different domino pieces that are getting us to that date. So we would like to have a town meeting. On December nine, which is a Tuesday at the regular town meeting time. And have an information session the week before, which is December second.
So I will just say, yeah, and I know that Dave knows this and it'll be, but so I just, we need to have all of the. And Mary knows this too, so I don't know why I'm even saying it, but so the warrant needs to be posted two weeks in advance of December ninth.
Yes, yeah, and that warrant will have on it those numbers, because the numbers are due to the M B L C on the twenty-fifth. So that is two weeks ahead of time and we will know what those numbers are even before that. Like by a day or so, because Andrew will have to have those numbers ready for the executives. So our timeline has lined up and everything is there, um, are there questions that you have about the process? About the thing that um, the M B L C P level of design confirmation, which pretty much just says. The building says what it's going to say, it's, you know, what it does, um, I do have this available and then. If uh Christina was said to be a responsible municipal official. Is that acceptable for Christina to sign that form? Okay, um, does anybody have questions about what this is and how we got here? I brought some beautiful boards for you to look at.
I know, you've been, you've been so informative the whole way, I don't think.
I mean, every finance person, I have to, you know, I'm just gonna. Throw a couple of things in there, which is, you know, as soon as, we should as a board, look at the finances at least before it goes to town. Number one. And um, has there been any discussion, because you don't have a number, it's kind of hard to discuss anything, right? At what point are we gonna talk to treasury and, you know, to look at this and say, cuz, you know, obviously there's lending involved. So I don't know what the rates are gonna be, I mean, those are things that go through my mind, it was such a short, tight timeline.
A few things already happened and, and this happened when we applied for this grant in March of twenty-four. Before we were allowed to apply for this grant, we had to sit down with the finance committee, which there was one at the time. Um, and we had to have our treasurer discuss with our finance committee and our um, like. The M B L C state authorities, um, what this project could possibly cost. Given the maximum amount of square feet. Right, so that number, which was the worst-case scenario, we had, has had project escalation cost for five years. And ours will be done in two years. So that was like an extreme worst-case scenario, because they used the worst number they could imagine. And over the mo- most amount of time and the biggest amount of square footers they could think of with the most problems, right? The number they came up with that they floated to the finance committee, which I'm not actually even allowed to say, cuz it's not like even like a real number. It's just like this worst-case scenario number, they had to have the finance committee before they would give us this initial planning and design grant. Come up with a plan for how this could look for the town to make sure it was not going to place an undue burden on the town for taxpayers. And that was a contingency for us applying for this grant in the first place, is the finance committee had to sign off saying that this would not be. An undue burden on the taxpayers and that the um bonding and um financial scaffolding structures of the town could withstand any of this impact. So they already did. And that was the worst-case scenario, and I will tell you right now, we are four months ahead of schedule currently. Um, from what was intended to be the deadline for us, so our deadline is December thirty-first. But then there's an additional one month like to get it in, and we are now in getting this into them October twenty-first. Um, and with that comes, um, you know, some obvious like decrease in the amount of money that we spent in this award. Which means that any portion of the towns goes right back into town, right? So we are looking at being under budget for the entire project as well. And earlier than we anticipated based on how fast this process moved so far, not gonna worry. Um, so it's been established to already be affordable, then Dr. Hobson came along and did Hobson magic. And he already in last uh town meeting, the um, the, not the special town meetings, but the town meeting in uh June. He had put aside into a library building stabilization account, the amount of money that it would take to fund this project. And bridge the gap between the grant and the estimated cost for that year. In a library building stabilization account, so that money was voted on, I think it was a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The number might be a little bit different. Bringing our account up to a hundred and thirty-something thousand dollars. And that money was specifically voted in, into the library building stabilization account to act as a buffer. To not have to increase anybody's taxes for this first leg of the project to get us to. Yes, ju- not saying like, you know, forever, but this first leg of the project. So that way we can use that as a buffer and not have to um impact townspeople. Additionally, he has worked out an amount of money that would need to be put into that stabilization account to prevent that from happening in the future as well. So he has done Hobson magic. Um, that is with the grossly overestimated cost package that was delivered previously, so. We're trying to make sure we do everything to mitigate this to be an impact on taxpayers in advance and to make sure that the town does not. You know, the library does not, you know, want to hurt the town.
And we will talk about the numbers when we vote on the warrant, before the warrant is posted, we will see all the numbers.
Absolutely, we'll come to you as soon as we have them, uh, we just don't wanna come to you before we have them, because then we're having a conversation about things that don't exist. Yeah, I do, I know, I would like to do that to make anybody feel like nervous or excited and then have an alternate. But I'm, I really feel you all, you're very.
You've done a great job on all of this, you have.
I, it doesn't happen from just me, it's everybody in the entire library's fear right now, so thank you all so much and I appreciate you listening and taking your time. Thank you so much.
All right, Christina, you're up.
Okay, so. Uh, tentatively, I believe the date for the fall, the first fall, special town meeting, well, hers will be in the later. Uh, will be November seventeen, I checked this with the. Dave Hobson, town clerk. And they're all okay with that.
And this is gonna be a seven o'clock? Because we'll meet with six with the attorney. Yes, I'm just gonna put it in my calendar, well. Go ahead.
Uh, I have a draft of the warrant, I'm still waiting for feedback from legal, so it's not been distributed. Yet, it's not ready, but the main focus is, of course, the moratorium. Obviously, that's most important, the other things are bills of prior year and um some tweaks to our existing filings. Um, but we'll see. We're gonna table the notice of intent to convert, still need to have more meetings with legal and uh conservation. We have two interviews on Wednesday for the assistant treasurer collector position. Um, also on Wednesday, I'll be going to the small town administrators uh meeting in Berniston, so. No, it's not.
Right off in ninety-one.
Okay, that's fine, um, so after that, I will be here for, for the interviews.
Um, excuse me, the interviews, when are they?
Wednesday.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. Uh, we received the. Oh, no, no, this coming, I'm saying. We received the final piece of documentation that we needed in order for the assessors. Contracts to be signed moving forward, uh, it was their certificate of insurance that legal was asking that we needed. Um, Mark has signed off, it's, he's approved for the form and so it just needs.
I should probably not sign in pink. No, I, no, we're good, I brought my own, but it's pink, sorry, continue.
How much did it go up?
Um, oh, so it, the, it actually. The contract should have been renewed in July, so what we're paying for fiscal year twenty-six is the same. But then after that, in fiscal year twenty-seven, it's forty, it goes up a thousand dollars. So yes, in fiscal year twenty-six, it's forty-three thousand, in fiscal year twenty-seven, it's forty-four thousand. And in fiscal year twenty-eight, it'll be forty-five. We got an email from Maya regarding the. Retirees' health benefits and it went up quite significantly. I did submit it so that our retirees can continue to get benefits, but I just felt that the select board should be aware.
On a percentage basis, insurance is just skyrocketing.
Yes, it really has.
And we have this within our budget, I mean, or do you think we're gonna have?
We did, so when we did the budget, I had spoken with Wendy Terrell from Maya, as well as Sarah, and we.
We did, so when we did the budget, I had spoken with Wendy Terrell from Maya, as well as Sarah, and we um allotted for an increase, because we knew there was gonna be increases across the board.
Okay.
We, oh.
And we did that for honorable, if I remember.
So uh, there's been some discussions about the need for a town planner. I have drafted an RFP, if you guys want to take a look at it, I don't know if that's the direction you guys want to go in, but it's an option. I've already put it together, so.
Okay, yes, please.
Uh, we got a letter from EverSource. In the next few months, we will be upgrading your reader to a smart reader. All residents have gotten this too, I've gotten it at my own home, um, so, smart readers. Oh, on October seventh, I had reached out to City Point to sort of reignite this conversation. So as you know, I've already spoken with Weston and Sampson. They gave me back, you know, what their pricing would be for the feasibility study. You can't really do anything without our OPM, so I wanted to reach out to our OPM to see where we're at, like go, go over some of the financials that's left. That was on October seventh, I've not heard back from them, I reached out again today, still nothing, so.
I, I, I think that tells us something.
I think that is pretty much it for me.
Okay.
Um.
We might want to follow it up with an escalation to somebody higher in the organization and say, are you interested in continuing this with us or not, and if not.
We have to take. Yeah, that would really stink at this point, but.
It would, but I'm not.
No.
They wouldn't have to retrain somebody anyway.
I just would like to wait until we go into the next phase.
Okay.
I agree.
Yeah, I guess we do need to get clarification.
By the time we get clarification, we're gonna be here.
Yeah, pray about it.
Did, did um, Bellford uh send you a copy of their feasibility study?
No.
No. I know they said they would, but.
Uh, did we have any public comments, we're in the public comment section, Kate?
I just had um two suggestions, requests on the dirt roads. Uh, and I did speak with George and the EPCG now. First of all, um, the assessors need to be, they need to contact the assessor's office for property owners, not the town clerk or residents, because there are plenty of people, some live out of town, who pay taxes on pieces of land. Um, they, people come up to go cross countries being, to maybe do things in their brooks, um, people have woodlots. So there are, there are impacts on dirt roads for property owners as well as residents. So just a, a suggestion on that, there are summer residents, and sometimes they're around when people who commute every day aren't around and they, they observe. And also, um, the other thought is, we used to have road bonds when big equipment, logging trucks and so on came in. And um, I, I remember, I think Rainey, maybe um, a year ago brought that up at a town, at a select board meeting, and I think that's a great idea to bring that back. Um, a lot of these folks who drive this big equipment, big tractor trailers and so on know this and they can put a bond up if they're doing, say, a logging um, um job. They put it in and then the highway superintendent checks the road at the end, if everything's good, they get it back. If there are issues, that money is there to do the repairs, so that the highway guys don't have to do it or we don't have to find extra money, so I, I just would make that suggestion. Um, the dirt roads can be really muddy and, and so many, you've got watershed uh owners on some dirt roads as well. So those, just those two thoughts.
Thank you, Kate, thank you. Um, George?
Small House Peaking, Iowa, uh, someone turned the security lights off in front of the fire training center and I don't know where or who has authority going there to turn them back on, but they should be on, because they had a lot of safety light to that parking lot at night, especially for people pick up their mail and so forth.
Okay, thank you, Mary?
Uh, just a, a point of order for the board, I'm sure you're aware, or if you're not, you should be aware that zoning bylaws by law must go through the planning board.
Corinne, am I saying that right?
Yeah, Corinne.
Corinne.
Corinne, yeah, it's okay, either way.
I, I know a Corinne, so I confuse it, I apologize.
October thirtieth meeting, could you explain to me what that is? Because I thought it was to vote on a memorandum, but now it's not to vote on a memorandum, it's to vote, to vote if we want to have a meeting.
So you're talking about the, sure, so you're talking about the planning board meeting?
Right.
Yes.
That's the town, it's for the town, right? On the moratorium, yes.
So the date that you're talking about, that's the planning board, so when.
Oh, okay.
Yep, so there's no vote that's gonna take place at that meeting?
Oh, alright.
The vote that will take place is, I believe, going to be November seventeenth. Um, actually feel pretty confident in saying November seventeenth, because everybody has agreed to it, so November seventeenth will be where residents can vote. The planning board meeting is not a vote, it's just a, a public meeting, yeah.
Okay.
Based on the moratorium.
Okay, because I write signs. I make sure I get people involved in the right thing and I didn't want to.
Yeah.
Publish something that was rough. And also, um, another question, I was at the conservation meeting the other day and they seemed to be really scuffling for some help, and I was wondering, I had mentioned it to Christine and she thought maybe the board was full and we weren't sure how many are supposed to be on that committee?
Yeah, so, it, oh yeah, so you obviously got my response email, I'm still trying to suss this out because our bylaws say three. We currently have four.
Four, okay.
But we're only supposed to have three, according to our bylaws. So.
I thought it was five.
I always thought it was five.
Yeah, because they asked for help when I was there, they, they said, you know, we'd love to have you, but then, okay, bust three. Wow, there's so many things in it, and I'm not sure if they even know.
They don't, so I, yeah. So uh, one of the potential things I may add to the draft of the special town meeting warrant is an article that adjusts the number of members.
Okay.
But this just came to my attention today, so I'm trying, trying to figure it out the best I can, I've spoken with town clerk. They don't have any notes showing that this was ever changed, I think people were operating under the assumption that it's five and they just kept doing it.
We just.
Okay.
Uh.
Okay.
That's why they're asking.
Uh, yes.
That's probably why. So once that, if we get that changed and put on a, a warrant.
Yeah, I would put it on the November seventeen.
Then we would have to probably reappoint the fourth person.
I'm not sure, I can always ask legal the correct way to go about that.
Kind of be careful, okay. Um, are we doing this executive session, do we?
Sure.
Yes. Um, all right, so um, we are going to adjourn to going to executive session, not to reconvene. Um, in accordance with general law C thirty A, segment twenty one A two to discuss strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions for common negotiation.
She made a motion, you have to, you know.